Hi, Councilman. How are you?
I am good.
It's called the order with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Mayor Kaufman.
Here.
Councilmember Bergen.
Here.
Councilmember Coombs.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Hancock.
Here.
Councilmember Jurenski.
Here.
Councilmember Cassal.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Mario. Mayor Potch and Sander.
Here.
There's no mayor update. Are there any issue updates? Seeing none, is there any objection to moving the consent calendar forward? Item number two A through two H. Seeing none, the consent calendar, item number two A through two H will move forward. Items from the policy committee, item number three A amendment. Language interpreter fees, city code fifty thirty-six, Candace Atkinson. We have Candace with us.
Sorry, Mayor.
Okay.
Joining a little bit.
Please proceed. Candace, are you ready to go?
Yes, I'm sorry. I had technical difficulties there. The ordinance is to increase our interpreter fees from thirty-five to ninety, which is approximately two hours of interpreter fees. We pay them about forty-five dollars an hour for the common language. It is also changing it from just FTAs on trials to all FTAs.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Coombs.
Yeah, so my main question is, sorry, my phone was just going off. For the common language, is it typical to have an interpreter, so Spanish, for example, in the courtroom pretty much all day? Or are people being asked to come specifically for individual trials?
Well, we base how many interpreters we bring in based on what's on the docket. So we look at what's on the docket for not only trials, but all hearings. And then we have that many attorney or interpreters come in based on that for Spanish. So even with the Spanish, we base it on what is docketed.
Okay, so, Mayor, sorry if I can follow up. So the contention is that there's fifty-five dollars being lost by the court more than what's currently being paid per instance of a person failing to appear when interpretation has been scheduled.
When they are scheduled, they have a two-hour minimum. So yes. And that fee, and I think Judge Day's on here as well, can be waived if they're indigent. So it's not something that they have to pay if they're unable to.
Further questions?
Mayor. So.
Councilmember Hancock.
Thank you, Mayor. So who pays this fee? The person who is requesting or needing the interpretation fee is the person paying for this? Or how is that captured?
Well, currently, the court is paying for all interpreter fees except for jury trials if they fail to appear for jury trials. And then they're just charged the thirty-five dollars currently. So we pay it. And just for an example, we had an unusual language. So we had to do a four-hour minimum guarantee in the trial. He failed to appear for the trial. So it was eight hundred and some dollars that the court had to pay because we have to pay for two interpreters for a day long. So hopefully, this will help with that.
And how do we recoup that money?
They go on a payment plan if, at the, you know, at the conclusion of their case, or they pay it in full depending on their, you know, what they can afford.
Councilwoman Coombs.
Yeah, so I guess my other question is, what is the remedy if it's the court not having an interpreter present that delays a trial? So if the individual appears, but the court has not provided an interpreter?
Well, that doesn't happen very often. If it's an unusual language that we can't find, we can continue the trial. I only know of that happening one time. But we, and if the case isn't marked that they need an interpreter, then that's not, you know, by the court's mistake. So we just continue it and schedule an interpreter.
Further questions? Okay.
No, Mayor, actually, I'll wait until we're in discussion.
Further questions?
Hey, Mayor, it's City Attorney Schulte. Can I ask one quick question?
Please.
So Candace and Judge Day, my, in other states, when I was in private practice, we could actually recoup some of those fees even if we were separate trial and they brought an interpreter in and then they pled guilty before the trial started. Do we have the ability to do that in Colorado when I'm in this court? I just, that's just a question I had never asked, but now that it came up. I mean, I like to be able to see us get as much money back as we can for the, obviously for the defendants that can afford to pay it.
Well, it's only if they fail to appear. So if, if they appear and we do a plea offer, then we wouldn't assess it. So it's only FTAs. Did I not answer your question? I'm sorry.
I just, I mean, could we, I mean, maybe Judge Day, could we add that fee as part of their court costs? If we're, if we're, they make us go, again, that's what we did in other, when I was in private practice. If I had an interpreter come in for a client and they went to court and they had to be there because they set up for trial, even if they appeared and they decided to take a plea, they would still charge those. I mean, it wasn't the whole amount, but it was more than thirty-five dollars. I'm just, yeah, I'm just thinking out loud. It was the first time I've seen this ordinance coming up. So just, just a question, if we can do that, Judge.
Yeah, and the ordinance would need to be amended to include the provision to allow for the court to assess those costs upon conviction or guilty plea. The state statute allows for the cost of prosecution. It's pretty broad, and that would include the interpreter fee. Our ordinance, as it stands right now, is pretty specific as to the assessment of interpreter fees for failure to appear only at jury trial. And that's why it's going, we're asking to amend it to any proceeding for failure to appear. But it could, Mayor, the state statute, and I think, C. H. Schulte, you're right, other jurisdictions outside of the state also have a law in place to allow the court to assess the full prosecution cost, which would include interpreter fees as well.
And Mayor, if that's the direction the council miles, it'd be happy to update the ordinance with Court Administrator Atkinson to try to give the court some discretion there.
Well, is there any objection to having the city attorney do that? Seeing none, please proceed in that direction. Are there any other questions or comments?
Mayor.
Councilwoman Coombs.
So my concern is that this ends up being discriminatory toward people who need additional support to access the court due to speaking other languages and that we don't have anything in place here that mitigates that. And so I think it's important, especially being the city that we are, where a large number of people do speak other languages, that we're not setting up folks who speak those other languages for discriminatory treatment in our court. And so for that reason, I will not be able to support.
Further questions or comments?
Mayor, who are you?
Councilwoman Mario.
Thank you. Yeah, similar concerns. You know, if somebody, I get people don't show up and there's a cost to the, to the system. But the difference between somebody speaking a different language for the same action versus the same action and not speaking a different language is now monetized, right? Is now, now there's an additional fee for speaking a different language, essentially. And that's, that's how this feels to me. So I have a lot of heartburn that now there's an additional language surcharge on trying to recoup fees when somebody who, you know, and I, you know, if you look at the American Bar Association, their standard is to make languages accessible with the principles of fairness. And that, to me, doesn't feel very fair in terms of how we would be applying this. So I also won't be supporting this.
Mayor Sundberg.
Councilmember Sundberg.
Just to be clear, if I'm understanding this correctly, if, if the folks show up to court, then the translation fees are absorbed by the court. But if they simply don't show up, then they have to pay?
Katie, I'm sorry, Candace.
Yes, that's how it's currently written unless you do request that we make the change that Pete suggested.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Seeing none, is there any objection to moving three A forward?
Sorry, I have a question, Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Bergen?
Yeah, maybe for the judge or Candace, I don't know. How long do these proceedings typically take with an interpreter? Like, I don't understand, like, how much it would cost for the interpreter.
Yeah, great, great question, Councilmember. It varies, but as we have found out through the services that are available here in the state of Colorado, many of the agencies require a two-hour minimum. Most court appearances pre-trial will last anywhere from fifteen minutes to potentially an hour for translation. If it is actually a hearing where there's testimony taken, obviously, that could be much longer. Obviously, trials, including jury trials, are much, much longer. A trial through the court could last, you know, a half a day. A jury trial is eight hours or more. So that's why there's certain requirements for more than one interpreter to be available. And that's per the Chief Justice directive from our Supreme Court. Depending on the amount of time that is needed for whatever the appearance is, that will kind of dictate the number of interpreters that will be required.
So is there a way to maybe, you know, pay for interpreters up to a certain point? I don't know if that makes any sense, but to absorb some of the cost? And whether it be on a sliding scale, I don't know. Just, it just seems like a lot of money if you, like, have to absorb long times.
I mean, there's ways, I think, that you could change the ordinance to address what your concern is. And that is, if an interpreter is brought in for any pre-trial matters where there's not a need for testimony to be taken, such as an evidentiary hearing or, or court trial or jury trial, then there wouldn't be interpreter fees assessed upon a guilty plea or conviction.
Right.
You know, yeah, I get what you're saying. You could absolutely go whatever direction you want to adopt as a way of policy.
Okay, so maybe can we look at that? Just maybe look at other jurisdictions and just get a better idea of how, how to do that fairly?
I, I'm happy to be a part of those conversations with, you know, Court Administrator Atkinson and the city attorney in the drafting some additional versions of the ordinance for council's consideration. Absolutely. I mean, it would be left, I think, policy decision from city council as to where you want to draw that line.
Okay. I mean, I think it'd be nice to have the options and just be able to digest that and come to whatever decision makes sense.
Sure.
So Councilmember Bergen, it, it, my understanding then that, will you then propose that it come back to study session at a future date?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Is there any objection to delaying this for further review and, and having Candace Atkinson and our Chief Judge, as well as city attorney, come back with some options?
Mayor Jurenski.
Councilwoman Jurenski.
Um, I guess I don't have a problem delaying it, but I don't want this to be delayed for months and months. Can we, can we set a timeframe? Because, I mean, ultimately, I don't, we're talking about fairness. We're supposed to be good stewards of Aurora taxpayers' dollars. And it doesn't sound like there's a whole lot of that going on with the current structure. So can we set a timeframe if we're going to bring this back?
Chief Judge Candace, oh, Councilmember Bergen, I'll refer back to you.
Yeah, I can defer to the judge. I mean, I don't know if it could be done by the next meeting or thirty days, maybe, minimum.
What do you, how many days do you think you need?
I think August twenty-fifth, Judge, is that, and Candace, does that sound acceptable to everybody?
Well, I'm going to be out for next week. So can I have a little longer time so that I can research this? If that's possible.
Twenty-fifth of August, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, that'd be fine.
No, no, not next week.
Okay. To Judge?
Yeah, that's fine. We, we absolutely can get it back for you for that August twenty-fifth date for your consideration, for sure.
Okay. Any objection to allowing staff to continue to research this and have options back to council study session on August twenty-fifth? Seeing no objection, then that's the direction we'll take. Thank you, everybody. Item number five, dual listing, proposed Colfax Downtown Development Authority election. Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a presentation from Brad Siegel tonight. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on kind of my introduction. But what I, what I did want to say, the purpose of tonight and what we're reviewing is referring the DDA to the ballot this November. Just for kind of way of a little bit of background, over the last eighteen months or so, there has been a significant amount of community engagement with residents, with small business owners and others in the area of kind of original Aurora Fletcher Plaza area. And what we have heard consistently from those businesses and from those residents is they would like to see a way for, you know, crime and safety issues, transportation issues and others to be addressed. And working with those stakeholders, businesses and residents, the recommendation is to refer a DDA or Downtown Development Authority to the ballot this November. That would be voted on by the businesses and the residents that are within the boundaries of that DDA. And so tonight, the question will be whether or not council agrees to refer that question to the November ballot. So from there, I'll turn it over to Brad Siegel with Puma.
Brad?
Great, thanks, Councilmember and council. Good to see you all tonight, council and mayor. I'm joined by our project manager, Naomi Laiswell. We do have a presentation for you that we will quickly run through. And I believe, Naomi, do we need the ability to tee that up from audio visual out there?
Thank you. Yes, if you could give us permission to share a screen.
So the presentation tonight, what Naomi will do is update you since we met with you all in April, in terms of the progress that's been made on the Colfax Community Vision and Action Plan and the proposal to form a DDA. Council may recall, in April, you gave us a green light to proceed with the project and to look at both the DDA and a community development corporation option for the Colfax corridor. So tonight, April, again, Naomi will bring you up to date. Next slide, please. And then I will talk about next steps. So Naomi, it is in your hands.
Thank you so much, Brad. It's great to see you all again at council. As mentioned, I'm going to quickly go through the background of how we got here today and describe a bit what's in the draft plan of development, which is a legal, legally required document to support the DDA, as well as the boundaries, and then turn it back over to Brad. So I will do, we're here in, at the beginning of phase three in the project. We've been through multiple phases of both outreach and refining options and recommendations towards this, this point of asking for the ballot, the DDA to be on the ballot in November. As a bit of a summary, we have, over the past year, analyzed data and read past plans, been researching peer communities, identifying initial priorities from the community through going out, talking to folks, understanding what the needs are in the areas. And our last touch point with you all was recommending looking further into the Downtown Development Authority and CDC at the April study session. Since then, we have written the draft plan, and we've been gathering input on that draft plan, which I will go through momentarily. Just to sum up the outreach that we have done throughout the project, we have continuously had a working group representing a broad cross-section of the community, helping inform and guide us on this process. We've had, as of the end of last month, over twelve-hundred inputs from the community and the city through those attending in-person meetings, meetings that we have kindly been hosted and been able to reach folks at, surveys. We have a project webpage with over two thousand four hundred visits at this point, as well as methods for online feedback at each phase of the project. And all materials and meetings we've held have had language access available by default in English, Spanish, and other languages as needed. So what's in the draft plan? First of all, the plan purpose, this is a high-level plan. It is meant to be a long-term plan to guide revitalization efforts along East Colfax over the next ten to twenty years. It also, as I mentioned, serves as the legally required plan of development for the proposed Downtown Development Authority. It also supports and describes forming a complementary community development corporation that would work with the DDA. And there are practical steps for each goal area to inform the DDA and CDC as they work over the next ten to twenty years. And I do want to emphasize, as I go through the next couple of slides that go into those strategies, that these strategies are very broad. There are some that could be accomplished relatively quickly. There are some that, for example, major infrastructure projects that are desired in the area that would take, you know, many years and quite a bit of financing to accomplish. So the plan is meant to lay out a menu of options. Each year, the DDA and CDC would make their annual work plan and budgets based on the opportunities available that year and community priorities and pull from these strategies I'm going to go over based on what makes sense that year. So there are six goal areas that came out of these community conversations and our research, public safety and security, supporting businesses and access to goods and services, supporting housing and neighborhood stability and wealth building, as well as advancing arts and culture, cleaning and maintenance along the area, as well as public space improvements. And I will quickly go through two slides summarizing some of the main ideas in each of these goal areas. So under public safety and security, some of the key strategies involve making crime prevention through environmental design upgrades, both to public and private property. So providing financing, providing logistical support to doing that, as well as working closely with the police department. Safety ambassadors who can respond to non-emergency safety issues has been a strategy that's worked quite well in other communities. Business support and access to goods and services. Our small businesses in the area were consistently held up as something that folks really loved and appreciated and were the backbone of this area. So there's, as you can imagine, a large chapter on business support, including helping with promotions, marketing and campaigns for our small businesses, helping fill some of those empty storefronts that we know are there and attracting more community-desired businesses, as well as ideally offering opportunities for property ownership to our businesses so they can stay in the long term, as well as access to grants and technical assistance for them. Under housing and neighborhood stability, um, there is a large call for help improving the quality of the existing housing um and helping preserve it, while at the same time adding a variety of new housing in the area, as well as uh providing access to wealth-building tools, homeownership tools, um, and access to jobs and economic opportunity in the area. One more slide, um, here are other three goal areas, cleaning and maintenance along the corridor, um, general beautification efforts, maintaining a good tree cover with shade, flowers and landscaping, as well as providing, again, the goal of a DDA, um, these services are above and beyond the baseline of what the city will continue to provide. Um, so these are extra supplementary cleaning and trash services, um, such as power washing along the corridor. Advancing arts, of course, working with the creative district very closely um on branding and promotions and working with the other small, non-arts-related businesses to create um uh cohesive economic opportunity there, affordable artist housing and spaces so that arts uh community can stay and grow again in the long term. And lastly, public space improvements. Um, some major infrastructure suggestions here um in the long term, but also in the near term, um, activation of parks and plazas that the community really values, um, as well as things like improving signage, alleys, navigation through the area and outdoor amenities. So again, this is just a high-level overview of some of the key ideas um in the draft plan. Quickly going through uh the recommendation that in addition, now tonight, um, the items is simply about the DDA and putting it on the November ballot, but there is also laying out in the plan um the complementary community development corporation. The idea being that the DDA has a very clear focus, um, it has a legally mandated focus on the Colfax Core, um, funded by tax increment financing. Whereas the CDC has a parallel and complementary close relationship with the DDA to work on the same issues and same goals, but it's not constrained by working within legally required boundaries the same way the DDA is. The principle behind this being that there are many issues that will occur in the greater area that affect the success of the DDA and vice versa, and these require very close coordination and a broad approach. I'm gonna take you through the next few slides, talk about the DDA boundaries before giving it back to Brad to dive a little bit more into DDA elections. So in determining the boundaries, uh, we had to consider both legal state statute um as well as just best practices. So per state statute, a DDA must be located in a traditional central business district of a community. Um, and statute does point to using data such as zoning, land use and the concentration of businesses, as well as keeping in mind uh where the DDA could have the greatest impact, where the need is, and uh with the consideration that DDAs can grow over time, adjacent properties can opt in at any point after the DDA is created. So the next few slides show you uh some of those data points to kind of build the understanding of how we arrived at the DDA boundaries. This map shows the yellow dots, those are business licenses. The zoning also shows, um, we've got original Aurora General and Main Street, which of course are uh meant to point to the main commercial activity corridors uh that are unique to original Aurora. And as you can see, the highest concentration of businesses are along Colfax in this area. Next, we have land use, so zoning shows what can be on a property, land use shows what is uh currently occurring there. And as you can see, commercial uses are, are clustered along Colfax, again, within that boundary that is being proposed. And lastly, well, second to lastly, uh, here again is a clear, simple map of the DDA boundary. And on the next page, this is the relationship of the CDC service area, again, overlapping with but not constrained by that boundary with those complementary and parallel missions. So I believe I'm turning it now over to Brad Siegel.
Great, thanks, Naomi. Um, I'll wrap up and talk about what's next and what's before you in your council meeting this evening. Uh, you are going to consider an ordinance that would put this, uh, two questions on the ballot within the DDA boundaries. The two questions, one, should a DDA be formed? And secondly, should uh tax increment financing be allowed to be collected there? Important, this is not a new tax, this is not a tax increase, but this will allow future increases in revenue from both property and sales uh to be captured and reinvested in the area. So next slide, please, Naomi. Uh, voting in a DDA is a little different than uh most table elections. It is a table election, but it's a little bit different than uh what council members may be um acquainted with. Um, there are a whole variety of electors within a down, uh Downtown Development Authority. So um to vote, you do need to be registered to vote in Colorado. Um, and you need to either own property, lease property, or be a resident reside within those proposed boundaries. Uh, so registered voters who are residents will automatically receive a ballot. Entities, businesses, property owners would need to submit forms designated a registered voter to vote for them. Uh, it does require a concerted effort uh to reach uh and educate qualified electors. And the city and the consultants can help share information but cannot advocate for or against this issue. Next, please. And then lastly, governance and next steps. Uh, provided the DDA is formed by voters in November, one of the next steps would be the formation of a governing board for the DDA. The state statute is very clear on board parameters, so board can be five to eleven members, must be businesses, residents or property owners within the DDA. Uh, one member of the board must be a city council member. And the board is appointed by city council. And usually with DDA boards, uh, the appointments come from a slate of recommendations. Next, please. So where we are now is on the left-hand side of, of this timeline, uh, where tonight in your council meeting, you'll be considering an ordinance to place this in this localized ballot. Uh, there would then be a campaign to spread awareness and understanding of the vote within the boundaries of the DDA. Provided the DDA passes in November, council will then appoint the board. The plan of development that Naomi talked about would then be approved both by the DDA and city council, so that plan must be adopted by city council. And then uh the DDA would be in business likely the second quarter of next year, second quarter of twenty six. Next slide, please. So I'll wrap up with some next steps. Uh, we are gonna be conducting courtesy briefings with taxing authorities that would be affected by tax increment financing. Uh, there is a um, a plan for community engagement and education and outreach to electors. Um, we will also be working on a second draft of the Vision and Action Plan that Naomi talked about, all in anticipation of the election. Uh, next slide. And this is our last slide in our presentation tonight. Uh, we do estimate about twenty-five hundred electors within the DDA. So when we talk about an election, we're talking about uh twenty-five hundred either uh registered voters that reside in the area, uh, businesses that have leases or property owners would all be eligible to vote. So with that, uh, Naomi, I think we can probably take the presentation off. We can bring it back if uh questions require. And Mayor, we've got uh as much time as you may have left.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Hickok.
Just for my edification and understanding, if you could address this for me. Um, you had the CDC part of that slide there, can you tell me a little bit? I, I might be getting a cart before the horse, but I just need to understand. Um, how are they going to be funded? How are they, are they gonna re-raise their own monies? What, what happens there if that's gonna be the hybrid plan?
Yeah, good question, Naomi, you can add to whatever I throw out there here right now. But the CDC would be independently funded. So typically, CDCs are funded by philanthropic, corporate, foundation, fundraising, sponsorship-type sources. Uh, they are not funded by taxes uh or by um, in this case, even DDA contributions. Uh, Naomi, anything to add?
Um, I will add that uh CDC is often also, what, what's unique about them, perhaps from other types of nonprofit structures, is that they do have a real estate focus. Um, so often the, you know, the purchase or development of real estate um along with a business, a self-sustaining business plan, um, is a large component of what makes CDCs unique. Um, so holding and developing real estate for community benefit, um, and that is something that we're also thinking through.
Uh, further questions or comments, Councilmember Hickok, please continue.
Well, just one more follow-up. So since they're primarily a real estate component, will they be concentrating on for purchase housing? Or are they gonna be looking at low-income housing? Cause the idea is we would like people to purchase a home.
Yeah, we've heard of real um emphasis on homeownership on the residential side and property ownership on the business side. It, it's also an important way for small businesses um to make sure that they've got longevity. So um, the CDC is envisioned to assist with a variety of housing types um and also to complement the DDA. The DDA can also invest in housing, but again, that housing has to be within its boundaries.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions?
Mayor, this is Angela Lawson.
Uh, Councilmember Lawson.
Question?
Please proceed.
Um, I have a question, so this kind of reminds me a little bit of opportunity zones, how they originally were supposed to be im- implemented. Um, so that's just a, a, just a comparison of what I'm, what you guys are speaking to. And of course, they didn't work out that way in the city of Aurora. We have more corporate um taking those particular zones. But my question is, you mentioned in your presentation that there's going to be some type of implementation of, of a, like, I guess, not tax, but there, there will be notified, the residents and the businesses will be notified if there's any kind of fees that they have to pay. Um, how are you going to get that out to new residents that may come and be in this particular district? Um, and let them know that they are in, within this boundary if this passes and that they might have to pay such fees or cost?
Um, good question, and, and again, I just want to be clear that the current proposal for the DDA does not propose any additional tax or fee. Um, it, it, it uh uses what's called tax increment financing. Currently, your urban renewal areas use this as well. So as revenue increases in the future, uh, with the anticipation that businesses will be more prosperous, uh, that there'll be more housing, as there's more revenue, that revenue can be captured. Now, having said that, the DDA does have the power at some point in its life to consider a mill levy. Um, if that additional mill levy is considered, it would require another election. So um, in that case, the assumption is that all residents, new and old, would be informed uh since they would have the ability to vote.
Okay, Councilmember Bergen? I'm sorry, Councilmember Lawson, did you have anything else?
Um, no, Mayor, I don't, thank you.
Councilmember Bergen?
Yes, thank you, yeah, just um, understanding um on the tax increment financing, obviously, any uh, any new taxes that are collected beyond current um state would then go, basically goes into the um investment, I would say, of potential projects that you have lined up, um, public safety improvements, lighting, whatever. Um, so it, a- again, no tax to those people in that community, it simply kind of defers the tax, the tax goes into, oh, for lack of a better word, goes into a pot and then that, and then once those are accumulated, the, the board that is assigned would decide how to use those monies, correct?
That's, that's pretty spot on. Uh, again, the only distinction I would add, it's uh, uh, the tax revenue. So it's not increasing a tax, it's future revenue from taxes. If, if it increases, it would be captured.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, further questions or comments? Uh, thanks, um. Uh, Councilmember Gardner for a wrap-up?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, yeah, I uh think that Na- Naomi and Brad gave a good um summary and um I think this is a, a, a really effective tool that we can utilize um to address some of the public safety, transportation and other um issues that we've continued to hear about in the Colfax Corridor from both businesses and from residents. Um, uh, like Brad said and, and I said in the beginning, um, the only question before us tonight is the referral uh to the ballot, the ordinance that would refer um the DDA election to the ballot this November, so I hope my colleagues will support that.
Thank you, um. Uh, further questions or comments? Uh, is there uh any objection uh to moving um? Sorry. Uh, item number five A forward. Uh, seeing none, then item number five A, uh, will move forward. I say uh no other business before the study session of the Aurora City Council. For Monday, July fourteenth, this meeting is adjourned. Uh, we will reconvene in the regular meeting at six P M.